Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you so much for joining us. My name is Brianna Ruffalo and I am the PA Civic Programs Manager for the League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania. Thank you all for joining us tonight for our 2025 Voter Education Series Ballot Box Basics. For your awareness, this webinar is being recorded and as an attendee at this webinar, your camera is turned off, so your face will not be included in the recording. As a reminder, that closed captioning is available in Zoom. To enable closed captioning on your screen, you click the Live Transcript button at your bottom of your Zoom taskbar. If you need any more assistance with closed captioning, I have dropped a help document in the chat, and if there's any other way we could provide accessibility for you in any way, please let us know. So tonight, we began our time together with a land acknowledgement. Colonial Pennsylvania's boundaries were first drawn in 1681 over the original nation's lands. We in Pennsylvania acknowledge the land stewardship of original indigenous peoples, honoring the Haudenosaunee Confederacy and the great nations of Pennsylvania, Erie, Iroquois, Muncie, Delaware, Shawnee, Ohio Valley, Susquehannock, and Lenape. We honor all original nations in the past and those among us today. So the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization and our state oversees a grassroots network of 30 local leagues. We encourage informed and active involvement in government while working to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influencing public policy through education and advocacy. To learn more about our work and to subscribe to our action alerts, you can visit our websites, and I dropped those links in the chat. So I'm pleased to welcome you to tonight, to our webinar, School Board Elections in 2025, How to Make an Informed Vote in These Important Elections. We didn't design these webinars because we know that voting, government, and elections can be complicated, and in 2025, these monthly webinars will discuss important topics like registering a vote, missing disinformation, safety of the polls, and much more. Whether you're a first-time voter or have voted in every election you're eligible for, we think you'll learn something new. To watch previous recordings of Ballot Box Basics, you could see the link in the chat. And tonight, you're encouraged to ask questions using the Q&amp;A function in Zoom. We'll leave about 10 minutes for Q&amp;A at the end of the event, and you're welcome to engage with fellow participants in the chat, but note, we're only answering questions from the Q&amp;A tool. I'll now pass it over to our Voter Services Director, Colleen.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Welcome, everyone. I'm pleased to welcome Emily Gaiman. And Emily, I asked you if I had correct pronunciation for other words, and I didn't ask you about your last name, so please, when you come on, pronounce it correctly. I'm a little sensitive to that. My name is always mispronounced. Emily is the Southern Lehigh School District's Board President and has a longstanding commitment to supporting schools and public service leadership. We couldn't be more pleased to have somebody so knowledgeable and so enthusiastic speak on this topic. She's currently serving in her third term as school director, including four years as president, and she's in her second term on the Corbin-Lehigh Intermediate Unit Board of Directors. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emily.
Hello. Thank you very much, Colleen. And yes, Gaiman, you pronounced it perfectly. So you did a great job. And thank you. I really appreciate the League of Women Voters offering these kinds of webinars and other resources. It really helped me when I was first starting out as a candidate to get to know other candidates in the lay of the land and just become more involved civically in our community. So thanks. It's a great opportunity to kind of give back, and everything the League of Women Voters did helped me in my civic career and role as a board member. So roles and responsibilities, I see, is our first slide here. Basically, the way in which, when you're electing a school board members, you are electing folks who are going to kind of oversee. It's called a team of 10, and you're going to oversee from a very high 10,000-foot view the educational professionals in your school district. And so sometimes, your biggest role as a board member is to communicate the role of what board members do and don't do. And essentially, it's carrying out laws are made in Harrisburg or in DC at a state or federal level, and we cannot necessarily change those at a school board level. We're just making sure we comply and that we have community funding and we are good stewards of community taxpayer resources. And so what you're looking for when you elect a school board member is, do you trust that that person is going to make great decisions? One of the most important things with especially the Pennsylvania Closed Primary is to be aware of when your voter registration deadlines are, because you may only vote in a school board election if you are registered, or in any primary election in Pennsylvania if you're registered as a Republican or a Democrat. In the November election, anyone who's registered to vote may vote. But because school board member, school board elections, rather, are, those candidates can do something called cross-filing, which is regardless of how the candidate is registered, they may petition to be included on the Democratic ballot or on the Republican ballot. And so the primary voters will see all these names. And this year, there are four open seats in the school board, typically four open seats. And you need to be registered Democrat or Republican to see those names on your ballot to vote. Let's go to the next slide. So this is more of what I was talking about with cross-filing. So cross-filing allows all Democrats, registered Democrats, to see all school board candidates who elected to run on the Democratic ticket. And it also allows all Republicans to see those candidates that elected to file on the Republican ticket. But school boards, when we talk about band uniforms or curriculum or stadium or STEM activities or teachers, those are nonpartisan topics, right? And so the design of a school board election is supposed to be nonpartisan. You can't say that, you know, when you say is it a Republican issue or a Democratic issue or a conservative or a liberal, when you're talking about most things in schools, they aren't really partisan topics. And that is, you know, just like judges, it shouldn't be a partisan issue. And so the party listed on the ballot is not necessarily indicative of the party of the candidate. And so the reason that that occurs and how that occurs is any candidate can choose to collect 10 signatures in a petition and file at the county office to be included in either ballot. Some of the other paperwork, in addition to collecting those 10 signatures from voters within the school district in which you are choosing to be a candidate, you must also turn in papers declaring your statement of financial interests, which is kept on file and refiled every year by a school board members so that the district knows that you do not have a financial conflict when you're voting to, let's say, approve a contract with an architect or to approve a groundkeeping contract or to vote to employ a teacher so that that teacher's salary does not, you know, if you're married, if they're your spouse, it would impact your family income. And so you file statements of financial interest, basically listing the primary sources of your household's income. The campaign finance reports are documents that are required to be filed in every period of the election cycle. Not necessarily quarters, but after a first period, after, you know, prior to the primary, post-primary, basically prior to the general and post-general, you must file statements of, I'm sorry, campaign finance reports to indicate if you spent a great deal of money in your campaign, where the sources of that campaign money came from. And those are all public records, the statement of financial interest, the campaign finance reports. You can learn a lot more about candidates by looking at those through your county office. So the cycle that school boards follow in the state of Pennsylvania, according to Pennsylvania State Code, are typically five seats are up for election in one year, and two years later, four seats are up for election. There are nine board members on any school board. And so that you don't have a complete turnover in one year, that's how it's split up. I say typically, because if someone had to leave office because they moved or because they just decided to retire from their term early, very frequently, you will see, we're currently in a year where four seats are elected to school boards typically. But you might see five open seats on your ballot, you might see six open seats on your ballot. A typical school board term is for four years, but if that shortened term had to be filled because someone left, you might see more names on your ballot. It's just something you'll be aware of locally. School board elections, we really think of them as prior to COVID-2021 and post-COVID-2021. School board elections used to be, as I said, they're designed to be nonpartisan. But in recent years, we've found that, and we're all aware of as a community, that some things have become much more controversial or partisan. And we're all aware of all those hot topics. I'm happy to answer questions you have at the end about any of those in particular. And some of them can or can't be addressed at a school board level. But the changes that we see in that 2020, 2021 school year, the seats that became, the seats that folks who took office on school boards in 2021 are now, it's a four-year term, so we're now in 2025, those seats are now up for reelection. And so when that, really that pivot point of we started to have a lot more discussion funding in school board elections, I know locally before 2021, districts, school districts in my area would have no expenditures or maybe $200 for the entire, you know, you bought a few pins or a few signs or handed out a flyer about what you thought was important in your local schools. Fast forward to 2021, you're seeing tens of thousands of dollars spent on advertising and on campaigning for an unpaid volunteer school board election. And that is a significant change. And so we're kind of in that new era of when that change started, those seats are now up for reelection this year. So any of those topics, the hot topics you saw in 2021 are kind of up again. A school board is a group of elected officials, and we decide things like in our typically once-a-month meetings. Frequently, school boards have committees. School board meetings are much more visible and able to be much more well-attended and known about by the community, whereas committee meetings tend to be a lot more informal and less publicized and broadcast. But we basically discuss and vote on the levying of taxes, of property taxes, the expenditure of funds through grants. We don't, we won't typically sit and interview individual teachers. You know, there are educational professionals who went to school and got degrees to do that. And the public schools are a creation of the state, the state constitutions. We serve as the governing body to enforce the state and local laws. And the school boards can affect the culture of their district through board policy and also through most important board responsibilities, such as hiring the school superintendent and approving curriculum. Those are more local decisions that your community reflects community values. Entering into bargaining agreements, that's the greatest expenditure of any school district is going to be the personnel, the teachers, the staff, the administration, and their benefits typically consume anywhere from 60% to 75% to 80% of a school's budget. And so approving those and looking from a 10,000-foot view of these educational professionals are using, reflecting your community's values and using those resources well and whatever limited resources your community has at its disposal. And also, school board members help to communicate and explain things to the community. Those are some of the things they're responsible for. As I said, we kind of think of it as a 10,000-foot view. School board members shouldn't be involved in those day-to-day operations. We, like I said, we don't, we don't sit in on interviews of teachers. We don't, we hire a superintendent, and we often think of that as a team of 10, the superintendent and nine other board members who really just ask questions as you can about, you know, this is what, this is what the superintendent's recommending, this is what the educational professionals are recommending for your school district. And the board asks questions about, all right, why is that your recommendation? Why do you think that's the best path? And really asking, just making sure that it's, keep it, keeping, setting direction. The analogy I use is that if you're on a ship, you know, if you chartered a ship in the 1800s and you're sailing across the ocean, the people who are on the ship chartering the ship basically say, we would like to go from London to France. We don't set the sails. We're not going to say, you know, what everybody eats every night. We're not going to tell you how to run the sailors. The captain of the ship does that. We're just here to make sure that as we're sailing from London to France, we don't suddenly start to see icebergs. Because at that point, a school board says, wait a minute, we said France and we're seeing icebergs. What's up? So it's a broad directional, kind of direction setting. But you don't get involved typically in the minutia of the day-to-day because we're not the educational professionals, you know, we're individuals in our community. You wouldn't want a cardiologist giving you a haircut, so you wouldn't want a school board member giving you educational advice. The school district is required by state law to provide certain information. Specifically, board meetings must be publicly advertised and posted, and that's how you can get more information about your elected officials and your candidates. The agendas must be publicly posted, minutes, information about how to attend, where it is, the time, and also information afterwards about what was presented. And you are required, school districts, school board members are required to provide an opportunity at each board meeting for visitor comment of residents of that district to provide feedback, to ask questions, provide comment, to ask and to help board members understand what your concerns are as community members. It's a great opportunity to attend a board meeting and to learn more about the school board members who are up there, strike up a conversation after a board meeting. It's one of the ways I became involved. We are happy to discuss what we do and why. And, but the majority, if not all, of school board decisions must be made in a public setting. And there are maybe five exceptions that they can speak about outside of a public setting. Many, yes, many meetings are now online, accessible from home. They are not required to be recorded and accessible at any point in time. I will tell you the flavor of a meeting that you get from watching from home. It's a wonderful accessibility tool, but it doesn't provide you the same kind of opportunity to interact and get to know your school board members or ask questions. Public comments typically have to be, you must be present to have an opportunity to speak to the board. And now, yes, these are wonderful things. As a candidate, I took advantage of. I, Colleen, if you want to speak about how to get more information, but I know as a candidate, the League of Women Voters does a great job of sending a questionnaire and into all school board candidates, and I encourage all school board candidates to fill that out. It really helps people get to know you and what you stand for. Colleen, I'll literally-
Thanks. Yeah, I'll just, a couple of things about Vote 411. Next slide, please. I'm thinking I can hold. So yes, learn about candidates. In many communities, the league contacts each and every candidate. As Emily just said, it's a series of questions that league members draft. So volunteers in your community have drafted a question that is tailored to that office, school board. They send it to every candidate. The candidate answers it, and the league posts those answers unedited. I mean, you are hearing it from the horse's mouth, if you'll forgive me. And then you can review and compare, so you see two different candidates. Next slide, please. So for example, Allegheny County, and this one just blows me away. They have 42 school districts, up to eight candidates on the ballot for the reasons that Emily described. So this year, there are 273 school board candidates on the ballot. So there are 14 volunteers working to, step one is to find the email addresses. That sounds easy. It is not. I've done this work. It's hard. Once we get those, then we pose the questions and get responses and post the questions. Next slide, please. So this is from the Greater Pittsburgh League, one of their pamphlets. And so they have a QR code. If you're in that, if you're in Greater Pittsburgh, you use that and it'll get you right to who your candidates are. Next slide, please. So next, next slide, please. Okay, so this is just a screenshot. I can't even read my own. I made this screenshot. But this is two candidates for school board, and here are their responses. So the first question was, why are you running for school board? I can look this up and see side by side what Sheridan said, what Vandidee said. Then there's another question, a series, I think four or five on this one, how we approach decisions on controversial issues. And you can see there, again, just to go back to what we were talking about, both those candidates happen to be cross-fired, so they're both running on both parties. Next slide, please. The league also puts together in-person candidate forum, fora, or in some areas, so this is East Penn School Board Candidates two years ago. And there are lots of work being done right now in candidate forums. And if you go to Vote 411, you'll see what's happening. Or go to our website, the Pennsylvania League of Women Voters or the league, your local league. And so some leagues do these candidate forums. Some leagues do an interview, just one-on-one with each candidate, and they film it and they put it on their website. And the advantage, well, in COVID, it was great advantage because you couldn't get there like this. And another thing is, some leagues are able to do that and then very inexpensively get the transcript translated into multiple languages, and they post those on their site. So next slide, please. So it's very unique and catered to your, your own community. So here, I'm going to pass it back to Emily because these were her ideas of other ways that you could learn about candidates, additional ways, I should say.
Yes, and I will say those forums, when I was a candidate, I will say the forums, the League of Women Voters are one of the best ways to, and I would, I would encourage candidates in your community to participate or ask the League of Women Voters to sponsor one of those forums or one of those interviews. Because the forum is a series of questions, and you really get to hear all the candidates answer the same question. And it was very, very well-attended in my area, and it just showed people for truly, you just wanted to get to know who's making the decisions in your community. Other ways to get to know who could potentially be making decisions in your school community, ask if you know a teacher, either in the district or just a teacher in your community. Ask them. Very frequently, there are unions in Pennsylvania, and teachers talk and are aware of who is running through their union. Ask a teacher who, who, and they also have contacts. You can email. All school board members have email addresses listed on those district website. Email current school board members and say, you know, do you know anything about the current election? Are you running? Are you rerunning? Are any incumbents running? Do you know of or do you support? You know, if current school board members are running for reelection, perhaps they're a member of a slate of candidates who's running together. And bottom line, school board members who are currently serving and will continue to serve are interested in having other quality candidates sit to make decisions with them. So they're going to have an opinion about, at the bare minimum, what makes a good candidate, and you can talk to them about that. There, like I mentioned, teachers' unions, there are, the Republican Party might endorse candidates. The Democratic Party might endorse candidates. Sometimes, I know in Lehigh County, two years ago, there were multiple Republicans running for school board in multiple districts, and the Republican Party chose to endorse certain candidates and not others. So, you know, even if you have the Democrats or the Republican Party could endorse. Other elected officials, very frequently townships work in tandem with school boards, and they might know or have an idea of what makes a good candidate or who is running, and just other civic groups, libraries, sports leagues. Folks you know who interact with school districts and facilities. And if you just simply don't know who's running for office for your school board, you could just call the district office. Because as I mentioned, those statements of financial interest forms before, everyone who wants to be a candidate on the ballot in May had to file with their local school district office a paper that says they're running. So bare minimum, you can call the school district office at this point in time and say, who are all the candidates who are running? I'm just not aware. And then you can, you know, reach out to them or look them up on social media. I'm sure there's, you know, opportunities for you to search for them and find more about, out about those people. Let's see, next slide. I guess I think I covered all of those pretty much. There's some websites on there for you to check out. Other general resources on school boards, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, known commonly in board meetings, called PDE, has explanations of programs and services and also what school board members, you know, what their role is and what decisions they make. PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, is an organization that has a website that if you are considering being a candidate or also if you want to know more information about what it takes to be a school board member, they have a lot of great resources on what school boards are, how they function, what they do, best practices. And you can maybe look for some of those best practices and ask your candidates about them and how they feel about them. That's another way to get great information about candidates. Let's see, next slide. Thank you. Most importantly, I will say, and Colleen, you and I can tag-team this, make a plan to vote. When you're going out to vote, one of the most critical things in a local election, especially a school board election, is to figure out who's running and see what you can find out about them and whether or not, you know, you, whether they reflect the decision-making style and whether they, you think they will represent your community well and what they stand for and what's important to them, whether or not they consider themselves to be a, you know, one-topic candidate. If they're running for school board because they think you should have a new auditorium or because they think class sizes should be smaller, or they think, you know, new computers, that one issue, it's great to hear them think through that one issue, but also know that school boards are not candidates running on one issue. They serve four years, and that one issue might or might, might not be a decision that school boards can make. You know, you hear a lot of things about who plays on which sports team. That's not necessarily a decision a school board can make. Municipal primaries have a very low turnout, so your vote really matters in the primary. And if you're concerned about, you don't want to declare yourself as a Democrat or Republican, alternate. You can register to be, know those, know those cutoff dates for registration. And if you're registered, voted independent, pick a party. And, you know, register yourself as a Democrat or Republican, so you can vote in a school board election. And then, you know, when the school board election is over, go back in and change your registration to be independent or switch to the other party. You know, there's nothing wrong with that. Pennsylvania has a closed primary, and the most important thing is to have a seat in your local government. And if what you have to do, you know, you want to be an independent thinker, so switch back and forth. I highly recommend that because primaries matter in school board elections. Also, knowledge matters. So if you don't know the candidates, there is nothing wrong with, if your ballot says Vote for Four, there's nothing wrong with going in and voting for those individuals that you feel confident about. You know, I feel like these people will represent our district and our community and my, you know, represent my values well. And so I'm going to vote for two of these folks, and I don't know who the others are. There's nothing wrong with not voting for people. So lots of folks say, get your friends and get them to go out to vote. I twist that, especially school board elections, and I say, make sure you encourage your friends to be informed about school board elections and make informed decisions about who those candidates are. And very frequently, that leads to more candidates becoming involved in school boards and meetings, which is great for your community overall.
Well, thank you so much, Emily.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think we have a couple of questions that have been submitted. I'm going to turn it over, though, to Brianna to handle that part of it. But I learned a lot working with you to prepare for this. So thank you so much. So many great points. Thank you. Brianna?
So much, Emily. I also learned a lot. And now I'll open it up to questions. So it looks like we have a couple so far. And I would encourage anyone to please type your question below. And I would encourage anyone to please type your question below in the Q and A question section, if you have it. We have a question from Michelle. She asks, what are some of the hot button issues facing school boards that voters should be aware of in 2025?
Sure. From what I've seen so far, some of it is a carryover from that 2021 election. And so some of the hot button issues are if those folks are running again, how their perspectives might have changed to this election. So that's one, kind of a revisiting of what, if you're running for reelection, what did you stand for in 2021 and how has this experience changed you and your values? Other hot button topics, I will say, is funding. And the dissolution of the Department of Education. The Department of Education is a great resource and a data collection agency. And so when we talk about best practices as a school board or data-driven decision-making as a school board, I sometimes wonder where some of that data is going to come from. So hot topics are, where are school boards going to get their information? If there is no longer that national resource? How are title funds and grants going to be, you know? Is your school district, a school district that receives a great deal of federal funding? Or not? Because the Department of Education. I will also say, special education in general. The needs and students who are identified as being unique learners are only growing as we learn more and more about students in our schools and how they learn. More students are identified as unique learners. And so addressing those needs while still finding the funding to address them is a, is a growing hot topic. I think dealing with inflation, dealing with the sudden decrease in available certification of teachers. There are fewer and fewer teachers every year being certified to teach in the state of Pennsylvania. And shortages, especially in those steam fields, science, technology, engineering, arts and, and math. There are real shortages of teachers with those certifications and finding out how to attract those individuals and those professionals to your school district without offering, you know, salaries that are going to potentially bankrupt. Finding unique ways to fund substitutes and busing. I think those are some, and the classics of, I, I really honestly haven't heard any of those classic divisive, more divisive political topics so far, but I'm sure as campaigns heat up, maybe, maybe they'll pop up.
Great, thank you so much. And you have another question. What is the impact of the elimination of the US Department of Education on local school boards? How has the executive orders re-DEI impacted school districts?
Yes, DEI, I addressed the Department of Education in that, that agency provides a lot of data about education. So I'm not sure how that will be collected. It'll be, it'll be, we won't have that resource anymore potentially. I'm not sure what the idea is to replace it. As far as DEI, that is significant. And actually, I neglected to mention that as a hot topic. The state of Pennsylvania, I believe currently that a letter went out, I'm not sure in the timing, within the past week or so, saying that any schools that are going to receive federal funding need to comply with having zero DEI initiatives. And I believe our state's, not the governor's office, but the, I, I honestly can't remember. I know the state of Pennsylvania put out a statement that says, we will not be asking school districts to comply. But that is all still up in the air about, you know, it's an unknown. I would say that when you're talking about the words DEI, I always think of, instead of the acronym, I say it's diversity, it's equity and inclusion. And as an educator, I have my elementary certification. And I also have special needs, you know, uniquely, unique needs children in my household that I've raised. And one of the tenants of special education is equity. So if you eliminate the idea of equity in schools, how do you address special education? Because the idea of equity, let's say you have a, a child who has a vision impairment. The idea of equity is, the class might be able to get the homework assignment off the board, but that student who's visually impaired in some way can't. But it's equitable for that student to receive that homework assignment in a different way. That's it, that's equity. You know, if we've ever seen that cartoon of kids along a, a fence, you know, there was Sunday, some are standing on the ground and they can see over the fence. Some are standing on a stool and they can see over the fence and some need a larger stool. That's equity. I'm not sure how we, let alone, you know, those, 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 the tenants of, I'm blanking, of course, on the name at this point. But the hierarchy of needs of a student, they need to feel welcome. They need to get celebrated. They need to feel that they are a part of their learning environment. So I'm not sure how you address that if you don't address diversity within the classroom.
Thank you so much. And yeah, I just pulled up the slide, Colleen, do you want to go over, because it related.
I just had a follow-up question, yes. So I, I just pulled this, I asked Brianna to pull it up because it just happened in, earlier this month. It's on the certification to get federal money. I know you're also involved in the intermediate unit in your county. And
I will say, yeah, if you want me to comment, that was a good point. The reduction and elimination of Medicaid. Early intervention, students that arrive in your school buildings are being served with services that are funded through Medicaid. And I know as a member of that IU board, the cuts in those funding to Medicaid impact what services students are able to receive before they reach a school district's doorstep, which impacts a school district's funding and how prepared that child is to be ready to learn. Or, you know, has the tools to do so. So that is definitely another, another hot topic. The concept in school boards of an unfunded mandate. Some, and this is all about how to get to know your candidate, how to be an informed voter. So asking your candidate these questions of, you know, what do you think of unfunded mandates? What do you think of addressing the, how are you going to address diversity, equity, DEI, how, whatever you call it? How do you, there are diverse students in your classrooms and you need to, through special education, address their needs equitably. How are you going to handle that? What, what's going to be your take? What are your values in going through that decision-making process? I will, you know, I can share an example of, when I ran two years ago for reelection, a hot topic was transgender gender assignment and bathrooms. And I explained to, when I was, you know, talking to people who asked me about that hot topic, which I, this election seems to me to have died down in my area, but that could be a unique situation. But when folks said, I want you to make a policy that says, you know, certain kids can use certain bathrooms. And I said, regardless of how I feel as a board member, if I make a policy that says that, it violates Title IX. And that is established at a federal level. And I cannot change that as a school board member. I can choose to not comply with the law. But if I do that, I potentially commit our, it's, I'm not being a good steward of our communities with tax dollars because a legal suit could be brought because I, as a board member, am supporting a policy that breaks the law. And then my, your tax dollars will be spent losing that case and fighting that case in court. If you feel that way as a community member, then you need to address that issue in Harrisburg or you need to address that issue, you know, from, from DEI, whether or not the state's going to accept DEI standards. But now, but you need to go to the federal government. You need to elect folks that represent those values for you. That's not something I can do as a school board member, regardless of how I feel, without losing your tax dollars. So that's also being an informed voter and understanding how your school board members make decisions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions. We can give people back time in their evening.
Yeah, there isn't any further questions. I have one little follow-up before we close. I was just wondering, how does the board ensure that policies that are passed are actually being implemented at this?
Sure. So every school district adopts, and I'm, I, I do feel like sometimes in the prep for this meeting, the conversations and questions asked, I, I'm able to answer a lot, you know, more easily than perhaps in a slide presentation. But that's a really, that's then one of the number one roles and responsibilities in how you can have a, your school district, your school board members can have a local impact. So policies are set by school boards. There are two different basic options to do that. There are resources such as through the Pennsylvania School Boards Association that will just offer you wholesale policies. Like this Pennsylvania state code says, you must have a policy about attendance, right? You must have a policy about this. You must have a policy about that. And you can adopt the standard policy that Pennsylvania School Board Association makes available. Or you can use that as a template and then set local parameters of, you know what, this is what works best for our community or this is what addresses it. Once those policies are passed and they pick up on board policy, how do you ensure that you, as a voter, that they're being followed? They are posted, they're required to be posted on your school website. You can look at them, you can read them. If they aren't being followed, it is the board's prerogative to change those policies or to not, you know, enforce or, or hold the professionals in their school district. Some, sometimes there are absolutely board policies that aren't followed. As a community member, I, the basic hierarchy is if you're, let's say you're a parent in the community and a policy isn't being followed, the first step is to go to your depending, you know, your classroom teacher and ask that question. And then go to the principal and then, you know, you follow up to the assistant principal and the superintendent and ultimately the board. If you're a community member and you see that like the policy about when the stadium lights are supposed to be turned off at night isn't being followed, you can, you don't have that parental input, but you can email superintendent or assistant superintendent or the athletic director, all resources you can find online and say, here's the policy, why isn't it being followed? And ultimately, you don't have to like the answer folks gave you, but you have a right to understand the answer. And ultimately, you can use either an email address from a school board member or your ability to attend a school board meeting and speak and ask that question in public comment and say, here is your policy, why aren't you following it? And if you aren't following that, that creates disparate experiences for community members, which is ultimately not a healthy way to approach. And if you're not following it, perhaps is that because you want, you need to change the policy to reflect what's currently happening? Or do we all agree that it's a good policy and we should really follow it? Does that help?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Super helpful. And then Judy, she just had a comment. I appreciate Emily repeating what she said about various hot topics. Great issues to use in vote for and one, and it's great to hear it again. And then we had one more question come in from an anonymous attendee. I think it was based on a comment you made earlier. They were wondering, who is throwing tons of money into school board elections and why? So can you speak on that a little bit?
Sure, sure. Um, I can speak historically. We haven't really gotten, I, I'm not aware of this current cycle, who's throwing tons of money. But, um, well, I'm just going to cite it by school butcher because I can't remember his name because I confuse it with gubernatorial candidate Mastriano. And so I, I, I can't, so who throws lots of money into school board races? Nationally and also statewide, there is a famously an individual who is very wealthy, who was, who lived in the Central Bucks School District. Last name starts with an M and I apologize, I can't remember. But in the last two board elections, that individual through PACS has donated tens of thousands of dollars to individual school board races. Why? I mean, that's kind of a philosophical question, right? But I will also say frequently, wealthy folks who want to have a significant impact on their local school community. The number one determinant of success of a candidate in a school board election is name recognition. And that comes down to two things, really, when a name is pulled out of a hat or out of a ping pong ball bin or whatever, literally at the county level, when you submit your name as a candidate as a school board member, the way they decide the order of the names on the ballot in the primary is to pull a name out of a hat or a ping pong ball, literally. And if your name gets pulled first, the probability of you winning the primary, like in the 90% might, 90, you know, 90% or more. If your name gets pulled last, in order to compensate, you need name recognition. And so folks put money in because they want, now this is a non, this is not a paid-for position. But I have heard comments, I have heard locally are from other folks who have run in my school board elections as individuals. The comments have been like, I, I'm, I'm either running for school board because I want to have an impact on how the school runs for my kids or I'm going to send my kids to private school. And so I think lots of money in school board elections translates to what you want to see your schools do, how you want to see them function, what initiatives you want them to prioritize, and whether you do or don't want them to raise taxes. And those with money can influence school board elections through name recognition. Thank you, Paul Martino, venture capitalist, yes, resides in Central Bucks. Just absolutely a ton of money poured into so many in 2021 and in 2023, both. Also, national parties, the Republican Party, the Democratic Party, pour a ton of money into school board races now.
Thank you so much for that. Very helpful. Oh, and then Judy, so there's some more questions coming in?
Absolutely. Keep them coming, yeah.
So Judy wanted to clarify what she asked before. Could Emily speak more about the dissolution of the Department of Education and its implication? What will happen if PA districts don't abide by the anti-DEI requirements? Also, if you could repeat what you were saying previously about the hot topics?
So, okay, I'm, help me, help me break down the, the
dissolution of the Department of Education and its implication.
Okay, so as I see it, it is, the biggest loss to me is the loss of data about education. Similar in the medical field, you hear all these grants are being canceled. Semin educational grants are being canceled that study how kids learn best. And that collaboration between states so that, you know, if, if Texas is doing a great job, Pennsylvania doesn't necessarily get to learn about it, right? Very much an IU functions as a centralizing agency that helps all the school districts in the area learn more about how to best educate kids and pool resources. And it's a, it's a communicative conduit. So without the Department of Education, I'm not sure how we're going to learn from each other as a nation. Because they are the central data collection agency. What's going to replace that? Information, number one. Number two, it's also the funneling of funds. So you can replace that system, but is my understanding that there has not been offered a replacement system to funnel funds? I've heard Treasury or Health and Human Resources, but how are you going to funnel Title I funds? School districts, some school districts receive very little in Title I funds, depending on their socioeconomic category. And some receive a tremendous amount of funding through Title I. And that's a federal program that addresses funding schools more heavily that have socioeconomic disadvantaged, financially disadvantaged populations of children. So funneling of finances. Also, just, we value, when we, when we want to learn more something about something as a society, when we have a Department of Education, it places an emphasis on what we value as a society. We want to learn more about how to do it better. And if we don't have that as an initiative, I worry about the insular quality and the disparate. You know, Pennsylvania has a system of education, but how far off is that going to be from other states? And really, you're preparing kids to be a part of a global and a national future. So how do you know you're preparing kids in Pennsylvania for a life in Ohio or an education in Ohio or what, you know, how do you, how do you coordinate that? Those, as I see it, and ultimately, my answer has to be, I don't know. And that's part of the problem. We just don't know. I don't know. Pennsylvania has said that we're, we're, we're defying, we will insist on having those funds given to us. You know, we being the state of Pennsylvania, the education there and schools won't have to sign off. Different counties, however, I, for example, my district resides in Lehigh County. And Lehigh County has an ordinance that says you will address DEI issues in your schools and in your employment. But if federal government is saying you may not, and our county is literally saying you must, what do we do? Like, what do we do? So that, that, those are, those are, it's, it's a huge unknown, right? It's just, I don't know. I don't know. And that's the problem, right? So that was the dissolution of the Department of, what was the next?
Thank you so much. Those were some great points you raised. And then you went into it a little bit, but what would happen if PA districts don't abide to the anti-DEI requirement? Yeah, you touched on that.
And it depends because there are state ordinances and they couldn't, they currently, and county ordinances and they currently conflict with the federal. I don't know, it's going to be a case-by-case case law. Ultimately, I guess the federal government could cut off our funding. And for a school district that is socio-economically advantaged, they have the ability to more easily say no. And for a school district that receives a tremendous amount of funding, they don't have, they have to choose between educating kids, you know, it, it, it's bad on both fronts. You have to choose between educating kids and giving kids what they need to be educated. Hot topics, more about the hot topics. I didn't touch upon Uh, hot topics, more about the hot topics. I didn't touch upon, ultimately, schools drive what kids learn. And if you don't support, I, I mentioned that there's a shortage of teachers in the state of Pennsylvania being certified. There's a shortage of administrators, there's a shortage of superintendents that only stacks up as time goes by. Cause if you don't have enough teachers and you have burnout, you know, the, the tenure of a superintendent um, a decade ago was, uh, fi- eight years? You know, typically a superintendent would be in superintendency for ten, eight to ten years. That has now been truncated down to a typical superintendent holds the seat for maybe th- three, four, or five years and that's the average. And so, um, that's going to continue to be a problem. It, one of the hot topics is teachers and administrators and educators really get to choose which district. So how are you going to provide and attract teachers? You know, if you're going to as a school board, have someone that directs what the curriculum is, or when you talk about book banning, um, or when you talk about, you know, would you, a teacher want to work in a district under X, Y, and Z conditions, right? So part of that decision-making is what makes it attractive to attract the best quality of educator to your school and what conditions would you want to work under, right? So part of that is just kind of an easy, would, if I want, if I wanted to teach here, under what conditions would I want to work? And, um, I've been asked a lot of questions about book banning in the past. Book banning, uh, uh, there are, you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have the Kama Sutra in an elementary school building library, right? You shouldn't, it shouldn't be there, but no teacher would argue it would. So book banning is not about what books should or shouldn't be in schools. Book banning is about what teachers think, the tools they need to educate kids and the tools they need to reach kids that are, have very unique life experiences, right? So if you have a kid in your classroom, in your elementary classroom that has two dads and that confuses your classroom and you don't have a book in your library about two dad penguins, how are you going to explain that life experience and that we're all just, this is who we are, folks? Book banning at a school board level, there are two ways schools get books, well, multiple ways, but two main ways. One is your actual library that you think of, but the other is you pay to be a part of a larger conglomerate service, like through an intermediate unit. And so very frequently, for example, your school district might not be impact, might be impacted by an external decision to include or exclude a book. My district, parents were complaining about a book being included in a catalog. And we had to say to them, look, the choice is, we either have the resource, the entire catalog for students or we don't, because we don't control that catalog. Um, the IU controls that catalog and there, the people who serve on that board decide what go into that. On the flip side, the people who control that decide what books are offered to your school district. So school board elections in other school districts, depending on who serve on those conglomerate services and library boards, could impact what books are, are not banned in your, so this, what you don't realize is the state of Pennsylvania, eh, even though we have individual school districts, we are very closely intermeshed. And that goes to in a larger state and national system. So it matters. Like I am collegial with school board members in our local districts, um, my, Southern Lehigh, Parkland, East Penn. We chat on a daily basis, you know, we, we as colleagues, but getting that interconnected and this relationship built are a part of things like intermediate units and a part of things like statewide networks. And so that's also how the, the innovation of the Department of Education, what resource are you going to have, kind of thing?
Thank you so much. Yeah. Um, it doesn't look like we have any more questions. Um, so I want to just thank you so much, Emily, and I want to thank all of our guests for attending. Um, and to watch previous recordings of Ball Box Basics, uh, we'll drop a link in the chat. We will make sure to send out this recording and slides, um, afterwards for everyone who joined us. And yeah, thank you so much, Emily.
Thank you so much. Uh, just inform yourself. This is great. Get involved.
Thanks so much. Bye, everyone. Take care.